Good evening. Today is Tuesday, May 12th, 2020. I'm Heather Peckley, Clerk for the City of Manistee. The City Council's May 12th, 2020 work session being attended remotely where all members of the City Council are in separate locations and not at the City Hall. Members will be called to order by Mayor Roger Zelinski shortly. As always, this meeting is being recorded and will be brought to NSC TV cable channels 189 and 190 and also available at manistetv.org. There will be no video associated with this meeting. The microphones of all members of the City Council, the City Manager, and the City Clerk will always be live unless there's an audio disruption. I will now begin to unmute and check each microphone that will be live during the meeting. Good evening, Councilmember Cooper.
I hear you loud and clear.
Good evening, Councilmember Beaton.
Good evening, Heather. I can hear you fine.
Good evening, Mayor Zelinski.
Thank you, Heather. I can hear you fine.
Good evening, Councilmember Sipset. Can you hear me?
Good evening. I'm here.
Good evening, Councilmember Shemansky. Can you hear me?
Louder, Heather.
Good evening, Mayor Protem Grabowski. Can you hear me?
Loud and clear.
Good evening, City Manager Thad Taylor. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay, Councilmember Poniek is with us this evening. She has not called in yet, but I will keep watch for that. As a reminder, City Council members, please clearly state your name before speaking and mute your device when you are not speaking. Mayor Zelinski, we are ready to proceed with the meeting.
Thank you, Heather. I'll call the meeting to order. Public comments on work session related items. Each person waiting in the virtual waiting room will be called individually by the City Clerk by the last four digits of their telephone number. Individuals will be asked if they have their comment or if they wish or if they are passing. It is very important that those giving comments have good phone connection and no sound or noise whatsoever in the background. The television and all forms of audio should be muted. Otherwise, there will be a disruptive audio. If the issue could not be corrected by the caller, we will move on to the next person in line. We will now take public comments. The work session discussion topics for those who do not have an agenda are discussion on temporary permits for downtown rentals and discussion on political signs. The City Clerk will now take over and accept public comments on work session agenda items.
Mayor, this is the City Manager. Can I make a clarification?
Yes.
Okay, the, yeah, the agenda item on discussion of, on a temporary permit for downtown rental, that's poorly worded and I'll take responsibility for that. What we're, that's one thing a company wants to do is some rental in the downtown and that will be handled by the DDA. They actually also want to discuss with council the opportunity to have, for lack of better terms, a pop-up business on our, on the Fifth Avenue Beach and First Street Beach. So, again, apologize for the confusion, but I wanted to make that clarification.
Thank you. You're up, Heather.
Number 6050, do you have a comment? I'd like to pass. Hello, number 6050, do you have a comment? Number 6739, do you have a comment or would you like to pass?
No, ma'am.
Thank you. Mayor Zelinski, those are the only two in the waiting room, so you are set to go.
Thank you. Mr. Taylor, you're up.
Yes, the Reynolds family purchased, I guess it was Manistee Paddle Sport Adventures. They were, that was a recent purchase and they've renamed it to Manistee Adventure. They want to expand the scope of the business to include bringing it, bringing portions of it into the city. We met with them, staff met with them, as well as the Economic Development Director for the Chamber. And what their, their vision is, is to have, again, for lack of better terms, a pop-up business at First Street Beach and also at Fifth Avenue Beach. They would then sell or have for rent things such as umbrellas, chairs, bikes, maybe some electric scooter, things of that nature. There would be no food for sale. So that's, that's two of the things that they're, they're interested in. The third thing, they would like to do a, something similar to a food truck, that kind of concept, but with having things, those same things rented from downtown location. That's going to be handled through the DDA. Now, council remembers about four years ago, we were approached by a company that wanted to have a similar type of a pop-up business on the beach and they did, they rented stand-up paddle boards and they also gave lessons. And that, that was allowed by council. It ran one summer and then they didn't come back for us. So hopefully, Mr. Dan Reynolds is attending the meeting and then I would, if he is, I would like him to just expand on what he wishes to accomplish.
Mr. Reynolds, are you out there?
Heather, do you know what?
Do you know what number he'd be calling in on?
Um...
I'm going to unmute both public lines and we'll see which one.
Okay.
Is Dan Reynolds with us this evening? I'm not, um...
I'm not hearing anything.
No.
Okay, I know Jeff McCula has worked with, with Mr. Reynolds to identify a location of Fifth Avenue Beach as well as the First Street Beach. That is agreeable to the city as well as Mr. Reynolds. Jeff has also had discussions with the vendors at both, at both beaches. There is absolutely no conflict with the vendor at the First Street Beach. The Fifth Avenue Beach, the vendor had intended to have for rent some of the similar items that Mr. Reynolds did and it was agreed upon that, that he couldn't offer for rent any items that the vendor would be renting. So we've, we've addressed the conflict. Back in 2016, when the council approved the use of, for that stand-up paddleboard concession, we did enter into a beach use agreement with the owner of the business. And so I would suggest if council's interested in accommodating this request, that we go along that lines. Also in 2016, my recollection that we didn't charge for the use of that property for the first year in just a way to help the business succeed. But then it was understood that in subsequent years, we would come up with some type of a fee for the use of that section of the beach. So that would be my recommendation that if council's interested in entertaining this, that we have a beach use agreement and that we forego any charges for this current year with the understanding that the, if they come back in the second year, we would charge. One of the things, when, when we first talked with Mr. Reynolds, I really gave him a lot of credit for not only buying a new business, but taking that business and trying to expand it in this climate. So my, all indications are he's committed, he wants to do a good job, and I would recommend council gives him an opportunity.
Just one moment, just wanted everybody to know that Councilmember Martin Poniek did join the meeting. She's, she is here.
Thank you. Anything else, Mr. Taylor?
No, that, that's it. You know, if it's something that, that council is interested in pursuing, we can certainly move forward on this with, with a draft agreement and then present it at a future council meeting. Probably it would be the first meeting in June.
Any comments from council? Questions?
This is Nick Shemansky. Am I on?
Yes.
Yes, I can hear you.
Um, you know, I lived in California and I wasn't very far from Good Mobile. And what they have, what they're offering was very commonplace, all along the Pacific Coast. And I kind of like the idea that, you know, it really kind of brings Manistee kind of into an upscale neighborhood, to be able to come to a city beach and rent an umbrella and a chair and not have to, you know, schlepp it with you or, or rent a paddleboard or some of the other things. I, I think it's great. And, and I also agree that especially this year with obvious, with the, all the unknowns, not having seats in this first year is probably appropriate. So I, I support the idea wholeheartedly.
Anybody else?
Yeah, Grabowski here. I think that's a good idea. I could use a, some covering over me when I'm laying down at the beach. That'd be a great idea.
Mayor Zelinski, this is Doug McCula, the Public Works Director.
Sure, go ahead, Jeff.
As Ted had mentioned, we had a virtually, virtual meeting with Mr. Reynolds, went through what his vision was, and I think it fits in very much so with what our Parks Commission and what the Public Works would like to see at our beaches. It adds a new amenity that will be available for our residents as well as our visitors. As Mr. Taylor mentioned, I also communicated with both of our beach vendors and they think that this would be a potential enhancement to their businesses and could benefit both ways. So the Public Works is wholly in support of this concept.
Thank you, Mr. McCula. Anybody else? I just have one thing that I, I'm not trying to be a damper on this, but I just have one concern, and that's the rental of scooters. It's referred to under state law as, it's under Section 257.660, electric personal assist, assistive mobile devices or device. I just have a question about how that would go along with our ordinances. Evidently, I read two different things. You can't, some, some interpretations say you can't ride them on any street that has a speed limit of less than 25 miles an hour. It has to be a speed limit of less than 25 miles an hour. Some say you can't ride it on streets that are in excess of 35 miles an hour or 35 miles an hour. I just would like a legal interpretation of how our ordinances and the state law go together. Can you ride them on a sidewalk? Do we have an ordinance against it? I'd just like that brought together. That's the only concern that I have, is to make sure that we're all protected here. The citizens are protected and the people riding are protected.
Right. And Mayor, we can, we can, I can ask the, Josh Glass, who's the enacting police chief, to research that and discuss it with the city attorney and provide some information at the, at the first meeting in June when this is brought to council.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea and I would like to, to work towards being sure that we could operate those scooters on our, on the, in the city. I see them other places. We just need to make sure that we follow the guidelines that are before us. Anybody else?
Yes, I've been trying to get in. This is Beaton. I, I agree with what Mick has said. I, I do think that it would be a nice thing to do. I do have some concerns though about executive orders from our governor and whether or not we'll be able to open the beaches. I guess I'm unclear as to whether we can go ahead and do that. So I'm deferring to Mr. Taylor for an answer on that.
Well, I don't know what the governor's thoughts are on that at this time. She hasn't given any indication. What, you know, the easiest response is, is that the city has been following all the emergency or executive orders related to this emergency. And so we will continue to follow those whenever they come out. So if they say that we can't open our beaches, you know, we won't open them. If they say that you have to have social distancing, you know, we'll have to work to enforce that. So if it's allowed, we'll allow it, and if it isn't, we'll work within the confines of the executive orders.
Mr. Taylor, I have a question for you as a follow-up, but that's okay. So are we going to, is the city going to look into what a reasonable fee would be to charge this new vendor or how are we going to handle that?
Well, if, if council doesn't want to charge a fee this year, it's not a, you know, front burner issue. But what I would suggest is that we can monitor the situation with Mr. Reynolds, you know, throughout the summer. And if it's, if he's indicating that he's willing to try it for another year, then we would start looking into what fees we might possibly charge.
I do like that. I like that a lot. Thank you.
So unless I hear some objections, I think council has pretty much agreed that we should move ahead or have the city staff move ahead with some type of an agreement? I, if you have any objections, please speak up.
I got a quick question. This is Jermaine. If, if they're not allowed to open up this year or if they're not allowed to, per the governor, if they're not allowed to open up, you know, say till the middle of July, August, can we extend that not charging them for like the first part of the summer next year? Since, I mean, it's not, it's something that they have no control over.
That certainly is something that council can consider.
And I agree with that. I, I think we need to give them an opportunity to be successful and, and also for us to monitor the use. So I agree with that. Anybody else? Hearing none, we'll move on to the next item. Discussion on political signs. Linda Beaton.
Hi, this is Beaton. I really haven't had a lot of time between now and last Tuesday's meeting to delve into this too deeply, but I've had some very strong feedback about making sure that we're attentive to people's freedom of, freedom of speech, and I'm considering that. So I, I think the best thing to do is maybe to table this and keep an eye on it this year. I will preface this with restating the fact that I think there was sort of like a gentleman's agreement not to put up your political signs within the city if you were running for office in the city until 30 days before the election. And we did get away from that. So I think it's better to just step back and kind of observe. Although it's interesting to me that a number of people have approached me with different ideas. One of them was, what are we going to do about the fact that everybody in town wants to have a garage sale? So if we could use this time for maybe talking in, in the general direction of signs and other activities that might go on, that might be appropriate.
This is, this is Mick Shemansky.
Of course.
And what I, what I'd suggest is that the Planning Commission has been working on a new sign ordinance for actually quite a, quite a while, several months even before we went into our pandemic lockdown. And there, there's a lot to it. And I think the Planning Commission would like to get a, a feed, some feedback from the City Council on whether or not it's worth their time and effort to pursue a all encompassing new ordinance on signs in Manistee. So I just, you know, again, since we're discussing signs, I'd just like to bring that up as a talking point.
So I do have a question.
Oh, go ahead, whoever spoke up in front of me. That's okay.
No, go ahead. Ask your question. Ask your question.
I would just like to get some feedback from Mr. Taylor and city staff about the fact that people, people have been spending since March 23rd, a lot of time cleaning out their basements and kind of getting things collected for garage sales. How are we going to handle garage sales in the city? Is there going to have to be social distancing at garage sales? I don't understand the law as far as it would pertain to that.
Well, that's, that would be part of the executive order right now. I have not seen an executive order that expressly allows garage sales. So you're not supposed to, currently you're, you know, maintain social distancing and stay home, stay safe. So I would think, you know, right now that it's probably not legal through, through any executive order.
But it, but it is outside, so there's that element too. It's not in an enclosed public space.
Well, I understand that. How do you think?
So I don't know how to, what's are people's questions about this? That's why I'm looking for direction.
Well, there's, there's a couple avenues. They can go to the State of Michigan site, which they have a list of all the executive orders. They have frequently asked questions and I believe you can all put those questions on there. But I would, you know, I would liken this to early on with the confusion over whether you're allowed to play golf or not, you know? An outdoor activity and, you know, initially you weren't allowed to play golf and then subsequent, after some period of time, you were allowed to play golf. So maybe we'll get some guidance from the executive, from an executive order.
Well, I would hope so because May 20, Memorial Weekend is coming up and that's been historically a great garage sale activity throughout the, the community. And we've heard, we just, there's people that are kind of, would like to know.
Yep. I wish I had an answer for him, but I've not seen.
Well, there's eight executive orders and I've gone through all of it, all of them. And it doesn't specifically state anything on garage sales.
Exactly. That's what I was going to say, that I have not seen anything on point. So, I mean, I, I think that we just have to defer to the fact that we're still being asked through May 28th to stay safe, stay home, and maintain social distance.
Well, I'm just wondering what the city police are going to do if they see a bunch of garage sale signs all over the neighborhood.
I, you know, I would hope that they would stop and have some kind of a conversation and say, you know, we don't know that this is allowed and you might want to discontinue it. Do I see them taking a lot of people to jail over?
You faded out. I didn't hear the rest of it, Mr. Taylor.
No, I said, I, I don't, I think it's going to be more of a educational thing if it's, if it's still not allowed happening. We would, I would hope that our police department would at least stop and engage with the owners suggest that they shut it down because it's not legal.
This is, this is Mick Shemansky. Maybe we could contact the Michigan Municipal League and see if they have any guidance or suggestions. They may have had this come up in other communities. And then maybe we could put some guidance out to the community as far as through the newspaper.
Yeah, we can reach out.
I don't see, I mean, if people are really concerned about it, why can't they maintain the six-foot distance? Ask people to wear masks. I know you can't mandate it, but, but try to at least do the six-foot difference and maybe only have new people at a time in the driveway to look at things. I mean, it's, at some point, we've got to be able to allow some activity that's normal.
Well, and again, I don't, I'm not disagreeing with you, but right now, I, to my knowledge, there's no guidance in the executive orders. And so my position is by default, if they say you, if they're not saying you can do it, then the default position is you can't. And I don't know that we want to supersede the governor's executive orders. But I can reach out. I will reach out to ML and see if they have any guidance on it.
That would be great because time is of an essence right now.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Anybody else on signs?
Mr. Manager, this is Grabowski. Could you, when you find out anything, could you give us an email at least?
Oh, yes, certainly. Whatever I find, find out, I'll let you know.
Thank you.
So, so going back to the sign ordinance, is, is having a new sign ordinance something that the City Council would like the, the Planning Department to pursue?
Any comments?
Yeah, Rob Carson, County Planning Director here. Can you hear me?
Yeah, go ahead, Rob.
Hey, good evening, councilmembers, City Manager, and City Clerk. We have been introducing different forms of language for sign ordinance back to about early February, the end of January. We went through a couple of different discussions with the Planning Commission and we're ready to bring forward a good sample ordinance for them to begin reviewing and basically dismantling and then rebuilding from that point. A part of that discussion is certainly on temporary signs, political signs specifically. We have a Supreme Court case out of Arizona that we need to follow that basically eliminates us from regulating signs by content. So if you have to read the message on the sign in order to interpret what the sign is for, you're legally, according to Supreme Court, not allowed to regulate in that manner. The State of Michigan does have some provisions in line for political signs and the time period that they can be left out following an election. For the time being, we can follow that and we can look directly just at temporary and not regulate by content. That would be our recommendation and we'll certainly cover the bases with the Planning Commission on this matter. If you have any questions, I'm here to answer them.
Rob, I understand that, this is Roger Zelinski. I understand that signs in general, they have to be neutral. You have to treat them neutral. You have to treat them all as equally under the court rules. For example, how would you treat signs that say, I, I'm proud of my Catholic Central High School student or other signs that stay in yards for a year? And how do you, this is just questions that go through my mind. How do you regulate what I put on private property?
Yes, so it's, it's rather difficult and it's a little more flexible to allow people to have an allowance for temporary signs on their private property. to allow people to have an allowance for temporary signs on their private property. And, um, rather than looking at a timeframe, we can, we can, uh, look at size, regulating by size, by placement. Um, but really when it, when it comes to, I think, some of, uh, the popsicle types temporary signs that you see, the big, the big issues and the complaints that we run into from residents are off premise. Not, not so much signs that someone has in their front yard that, on their own property. It's, it's typically something that a business has placed off premise at a corner with a floppy sign. You see them up and down the highways, um, and in other communities around Northwest Michigan. Um, so we could probably regulate, look for a way to regulate temporary off premise signs and maybe, um, just have a size restricting on, um, temporary signs that are on an individual's property.
Thank you, Rob. Anybody else?
Yes, um, this is Beaton. Um, I, I did notice a number of signs, uh, for gutters, uh, cleaning or something, uh, around the city in the last couple weeks, and they were mostly placed in the easement, which are aggravating to the homeowner. They know it's in the easement, but they really can't, it, it almost looks like they're endorsing the company. So I don't know how we can regulate that, but I wish that we could figure out a way to do that.
Yep, if it's, uh, if it's on city property, if it's a city easement, city right of way, the city would have the authority to remove those under a temporary sign. Under, I think, under currently under the temporary sign ordinance section of the zoning laws. I think we can remove those right now. Um, if they're in the U S thirty-one right of way, M dot would legally be the entity to remove those, but I'm fairly certain that we could communicate with M dot and maybe come to an agreement that they would allow the city to remove those signs themselves. Um, because I think M dot does remove quite a few of those, particularly when they're on utility pole, uh, poles at intersections. And, um, they may, they may, you know, support the idea of, uh, saving them a little staff time because we're right there in town. Um, and I, I can tell you from past experience, what we used to do, um, at a previous, uh, place I worked at was we would gather up those popsicle signs and rather than destroy them, we would hang on to them in a location for thirty days. And so if it was a business owner, um, they could come pick up their signs and take them back. Um, but after that, a lot of time from when they were, they were taken off of the right of way, um, they were only kept for thirty days. That's all I have.
Okay.
I, I believe, Mr. Taylor, you correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe we have an ordinance that does not allow anyone to put any signs in the, uh, public right of way, is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you. Anybody else? Hearing none, is there any other we'd like to talk about tonight?
Yeah, Mayor, this is, uh, Thad. I've got a couple of, I'd, I'd like to address council, uh.
Go ahead.
Okay, uh, first of all, um, we, we don't have any need for a meeting next week because there's nothing for the agenda. So, um, we will, unless council wants to meet, there's, there's, there's going to be no, no agenda items. So my in- intent is to just cancel the meeting.
Any comment on that from council? Hearing none, I would assume it's all right, Mr. Taylor.
Okay, and then I also want to, uh, talk to council about, um, a program we've been investigating in the last few days. It's called the Work Share Program. It's the CARES Act that was, uh, passed by the federal government and funded to help support, um, workers in, during this pandemic. And what it is, is that employees' hour, work hours are reduced and technically they're, they're placed on a furlough. And it would be very similar to what we're doing right now with what we call sustainability schedules. And we have different schedules in different departments, and our employees are working reduced hours, but the city pays them as working their regular number of hours. So as an example, if, uh, I'm just going to use D P W. If their work hours redu, were reduced by twenty-five percent, they are eligible to file for unemployment, uh, to make up that difference. And in addition, for every week that they're on this furlough and reduced work hours, they get a six hundred dollar check from the, basically from the federal government. So, so again, using D P W, if they're working, um, thirty hours a week, normally scheduled for forty, those ten hours that they're reduced, they could ma- make a claim for unemployment. It doesn't penalize the city, uh, because it's not going to adversely impact us. And they also get, no questions asked, a six hundred dollar check. So they're getting, uh, thirty hours of pay, they're getting their, um, eligible to apply for unemployment, and they get this six hundred dollar. And we're looking at, um, implementing that maybe as early as, uh, next week, certain employee groups. This is available, uh, through the end of July. So what that would do, it would allow the city to save really, you know, back of the napkin calculation, somewhere between a hundred and two hundred thousand dollars through the end of July, that we could have to address any revenue shortfalls that we would experience in the next twelve to twenty-four months. Um, we've, we've got, uh, agreement from the D P W, um, and Jeff has worked out a schedule where they would in fact work thirty hours a week. And, uh, the D P W would be functioning six days a week in different teams. And in the same, uh, they, they can reduce the bridge tender hours ten percent. And then with the, uh, salaries and non-union, we're looking at a twenty percent reduction. Uh, working four days instead of five. Um, so those groups are poised and ready to go. I'm working, I, I introduced this, um, fire union thing, and I'm working to arrange something with the police department yet this week to discuss it. I just want to let you know that this is something that we're going to pursue. It's, it's a true win-win for everybody. The city, again, uh, very, very roughly could save between a hundred and two hundred thousand dollars. And in effect, uh, without violating any laws, the employees will get more than they normally would, you know, for, uh, the work. So just want to let council know that we're going to move forward to that because I, I don't see any negatives.
Mr. Taylor, it sounds like good business sense to me where, uh, there's no negatives and, and, uh, possible savings for the city, so good on you for coming up with it.
Yeah, I, I will, uh, I will.
This is Beaton, this is Beaton, I have a comment. Um, I just, I am concerned, and this is just how I feel. We get, we've had a lot of, not a lot, but we've had complaints from the public before about the D P W not being attentive to taking care of weeds and other problems in the city and, and trimming things up in our parks and such and such. I don't want this to become an opportunity for that to slide. So I guess my only comment is, my concern is that I want the city to look as spiffy as possible and for them to be doing their due diligence before they take advantage of this. I, I don't want to pose a hardship on the D P W, but again, if the public is aware that they're getting this extra six hundred dollars a week or whatever for not working and the city is not looking its best, we're going to have some problems.
Well, first of all, the, the employees aren't taking advantage of that. This is a program that's, um, was implemented by the federal government, fully funded, and the intent is to try to keep employees, uh, committed to their employer. So we're following all the federal guidelines, we're saving the, the city, uh, between a hundred and two hundred thousand dollars, and then it becomes just a managed, man, issue of prioritizing the workload. Now, are we going to get everything done in thirty hours that we normally do in four? No. But we're going to hit the high stock. And then we'll have, uh, a different workload when we come back off of that. And that's, that's going to be across the board, the non-union and salary employees, to prioritize our workload. We've been doing that, um, since this pandemic hit because we're just operating differently. So, um, I, I'm confident that our, I, that our D P W director and his crew know what priorities are for this community. We'll, uh, take care of them accordingly.
Well, uh, again, I'm, I'm just going to try to restate this in a little different, um, way. Just the taxpayer is not getting a, a raise. So the taxpayer expects the parks and everything else to look as, as, as attractive as always. So I just don't want to see a slide in that. I don't think that they will, but I'm just questioning you that this is a, this is something that people will attach, you know, this is why, you know, it, the parks don't look good is because they're taking advantage of the federal government paying them extra money.
Right. Well, and, and, you know, the, the, the citizens are getting something in the fact that this is a, this is a way for the city to save between a hundred and two hundred thousand of the, uh, of the citizens' money that we will most likely need to preserve services in the next twelve to fourteen, or twenty-four months. So, you know, I would just say that the citizens are getting something, uh, because if we don't do that, that's a hundred to two hundred thousand less that we have to address revenue shortfalls.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Assuming, uh, we have, I just have a quick, uh, co, or question. I would assume that because of all the cancellations, all the events that we have canceled and right through the Fourth of July, that the workload would be a little bit decreased with the D P W. Uh, maybe Mr. McCula could answer that.
Well, I, and he probably can, and I'll, and I'll chime in. As an example, we've, we've closed the bathrooms, you know, and they, they haven't. So that's a task we haven't, we haven't had to do. Uh, you know, the, the marina, we're, we're going to discuss whether, when and where, when we may be able to open that. Same with the fish cleanings. So there's a lot of, as you said, pointed out, Mayor, there are tasks that we're not performing now that we would have at this same time last year. So to a certain degree, the workload has diminished. Some point that will pick up.
I guess where I'm going with that is, at this point, with the workload being diminished, that our town should look nice because they'll, they have that, that time to make sure the grass is mowed and make sure things are looking spiffy.
Right.
Is that a, is that a, is that a good assumption or a bad assumption?
That, that's a fair assumption. And, uh, in a discussion we had at, at staff, uh, I think we're talking about, talking about this particular topic. I know you remarked that, um, because people are spending more time at home, they're seeing a significant, significant increase in the brush that's piled at the curb as well as, uh, lawn, um, debris. And, uh, we're getting that taken care of. Um, so, I mean, we're, we're doing everything we can to make the town pretty.
That would be very important to the real estate market. And, and, you know, everybody knows I'm a, I'm a big, uh, but, um, curb appeal is very important. And I think we need to put our best foot forward if they, if, uh, we can do so.
Your Honor, can you hear me?
Yes.
Uh, this is, uh, Director McCula. So, right now, the way that we've split up our staff into two teams has resulted in about a thirteen percent reduction in the hours that we are working in order to keep them separated and safe. Um, we have a little bit less, uh, of a, we'd say a priority on, on some of our normal spring openings, um, items that are, you know, downtown on the beaches. Um, we've also held back on hiring our summer staff, um, until we understand where we're going to be at with the governor's executive orders. The reductions in, that are being proposed here, um, add to the amount of work hours that are, are not being put forward to these events or the, to our priorities. But we are trying to, um, you know, we're assessing all of our work tasks and we're trying to, um, prioritize them to do what, what we can do. Um, as I, as Mr. Taylor mentioned, we are seeing, normally we've got two pages of brush, uh, to chip or up to three. Um, so far we've got five this week, and it's only Tuesday. So some of those workloads are actually increasing. Um, but I will tell you that anytime you reduce staff hours, at some point it reduces, um, the services that we can provide. Some people may not notice them entirely, uh, but they're there. One of the things that we've talked about is our sidewalk improvement program. Um, we're unsure of how our Act fifty-one money is going to be reduced from the state of Michigan. So that could be one of those areas where we pull back on staff involvement, um, un- until we make sure that we've got the, the funds coming from the state. So a- as everybody's been saying for the last three months, stuff keeps evolving day to day, week to week, and we're doing our best to manage it and keep up with it.
Thank you, Mr. McCula. Anybody else?
Okay, Thad, this is Grabuski. Is that going to affect anything that the police and fire and like the D P W, they all have contracts for hours? Is, uh, is that mentioned in the state deal?
Um, well, there, as I said before, our employees have been on sustainability schedules for quite some time, and none of the bargaining units have been registered a complaint about working less hours for the same pay. So I don't expect that they'll raise that in the future.
Mr. Taylor, I have one question, and we didn't, I didn't hear anything talked about. Is the medical insurances, is the effect of our medical in any way reduced?
No, we're, we're going to main, we're going to maintain the benefit levels.
Anybody else?
I actually have a comment, this is Jermaine. Um, I, I think it's a great idea if they can get, uh, you know, shorten their hours and they can get paid in refer somewhere else. Um, I think that we need to save every penny that we possibly can because we don't know, you know, what the rules are going to be for June, July, August. I mean, we might be completely stay at home again in June or July. So I, I don't think that it's, they're taking advantage of anything, getting paid the six hundred dollars. I think that's ridiculous. Um, I, I think it's a good idea, and I think you need to move forward with it.
Thank you, Jermaine, I agree with that. Uh, is there anything else? Anybody else?
I agree with it so long as our, you know, like I've said before, I'm worried about curb appeal and appearance of our town or, and our parks.
Anybody else?
Yep, this is Jermaine again. I, I agree with you, Linda, with the curb appeal, but I mean, we have way bigger issues like a blight versus, you know, the brush not being picked up right at Friday at eight o'clock. I mean, I, I do agree with you, but I, I don't think that it's going to be an issue.
Okay, I think we're, I think I agree with you on that too. Thanks, Jermaine.
Anybody else? Mr. Taylor, do you have anything else?
Nothing further.
Well, take a motion to adjourn, or I'm just going to adjourn. We're adjourned, thank you, everybody. Be safe out there.